Today is Thursday, September 22, 2022. It's 5:01 PM. We are in the city chambers, and I call the City Commission Special Meeting to order. Commissioners present are Commissioner McDowell, Commissioner White, Mayor Emrich, Vice Mayor Langdon, and Commissioner Luke. There is a forum present for this meeting. Also present, we have City Manager Fletcher, City Attorney Slaton, City Clerk Fost. Representing the police, I have Detective Feigl, and Fire Chief Titus is in the back. I'm going to call on Commissioner Luke to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ma'am. Request a motion for approval of the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner McDowell to approve the agenda as presented, and that was seconded by Commissioner Luke. Please vote. That passes five to zero. Public comment. City Clerk, do you have any online public comment? And I have some in-house, a Mr. Joseph Wachtowski. Am I close? Okay, you're up, sir.
First, I'd like to just start my comment by commending the commission for your brilliance in raising taxes this year, because, you know, we've been here for a few years now, and I've been thinking of, I've been racking my brain for thinking of a way to keep Northport from growing anymore and keeping some more people out, because it's growing too fast, but it never occurred to me to raise taxes again. But it's a good method. My comment is that the tax increase proposed for this year isn't horrendous, but there are, and I'm speaking for some of my neighbors, there are a lot of people on fixed incomes. And in a time of record-high inflation, of rising fuel prices, and they will be rising again, I assure you, in a week or two, it might be hard on a lot of people to do that. Now, I've been in your seats, I mean literally been in your seats, so I know the problems. But you have to sharpen your pencils and go back in and maybe look at some of the items that perhaps don't have to be done this year, or perhaps can be cut in half. There are any one of a number of ways of keeping expenses down if necessary, some of them rather drastic. I think every McDonald suggestion of a line item veto is great. That was done where I'm from, or it was attempted for many years to be done, and it was never done. And it wound, we wound up, a lot of people wound up moving from where I used to live a few years ago. And I think it's a great idea, line item veto. I think it's good for any government organization to have a line item veto if necessary. So I just want to speak for all the people who may find it very hard because of a fixed income situation to pay any increases. And of course, I guess I don't like tax increases even anyway, because, you know, a little here, a little there, a little there, a little there. It actually does mount up, folks. So that's what I have to say, and I've had my say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I know I'm not going to get this one right, sir, but Edward Placentio, you're up, sir.
Yeah, I'd like to echo the previous speaker's comments with a couple of items. One, as we know, the inflation is going up. You people are wanting to raise our property taxes, and I think there's a conflict of interest here somehow. When the interest, when the property taxes go up, your general funds go up, your wages go up. So you people are voting on your wages going up. And I disapprove of that, because I'm on Social Security. I don't see my wages going up anywhere. But you people can vote yourself in, you can get your wages up, and it's supposed to be legal. But I read something in the paper about 50 new employees. Is this true? If you have 50 new employees, it says there's some redundancy here. What are these employees going to do? And I don't understand why we as taxpayers have to pay for additional employees when you have people working right now, maybe not to the 100% that they should be doing, cutting back on their one-hour lunch breaks or whatever they do nowadays. But I want you people to start looking at cutting costs, like you mentioned, cutting costs. You have a reserve. You have a reserve, and you can fall back if something should happen. But I don't see why we as homeowners have to pay additional income to you people for nothing. What benefits are we going to get? What sort of benefits am I going to get tomorrow or next great year when you raise my property taxes? Is something going to change on my behalf, or is it going to improve your standard of living? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Valdi Olender, you're up, sir.
Good afternoon. I am Valdi Olender, Northport Geographical Area. I have no contract with corporations, City of Northport. I come here in peace. I am instructing you, Peter Emrich, to remove police departmentalists from my back. I have high dignity. Please respect it. Obviously, you don't. Please don't treat me like Red Scott of 1857. Manager, attorney, and clerk, you in contempt to Northport Organization chart. I'm going to speak now about eight elements of the contract, which I don't have at you at all, but listen to it. Number one, artists must be competent to the contract. Number two, free and genuine concern. Number three, full disclosure. Number four, valuable considerations. Number five, certainty of terms. Number six, meeting of the minds. Number six, I mean seven autographs or signature. Please provide me, because I didn't do, I don't sign any contract with anyone. And eight, privacy of the contract. Since to me, like you, assume or presume there is something, but I like to see it. And now, by the power vested in the Declaration of Independence, governments are instituted among the man, deriving the just powers from the consent of the government. I have no cons, I don't give you any consent for raising the budget. I don't give you any consent for raising the millage, or even not raising the millage. You should reduce it. And I do not have the consent for fire, waste, and whatever, road and drainage. I do not consent. You hoarding $134 million, and you're not using this money. This is, you have to look at it, use the money first, and like those gentlemen stated, you have the money. Most people, I believe, like 33% are in wheelchairs, so to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, moving on to public hearings. Item number 2022-R-52. City Clerk, can you read by title only, please?
Resolution number 2022-R-52. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Northport, Florida, adopting the final ad lour millage rate and rollback rate for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2022, and ending September 30, 2023, providing for findings, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. City Manager, this is...
I still have to read some more.
You still have more? Okay, go ahead. Keep going.
Section two, certification and adoption. Section 2.01. The general municipal millage rate and tax levy for the City of Northport, Florida is 3.7667 mils, which is $3.7667 per $1,000 of assessed property within the city. The millage rate is certified to the property appraiser and the tax collector of Sarasota County, Florida, to be levied for the city's general government operating and capital purposes for the fiscal year. 2.02. The general municipal millage rate is 17.75% higher than the rollback rate of 3.1990 mils, which is $3.1990 per $1,000 of assessed property within the city. The reason that the ad lour tax revenues are increasing include personnel costs from 26 additional general fund positions, implementation of the salary study, CBA contract required and merit increases, operating expense increases, and expansion of the Economic Development Division. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager, this is your item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So during the special meeting of the commission on July 19, 2022, you, the board approved a maximum millage rate of 3.7667, which is the current rate. Proposed budget actually includes that same 3.7667 millage rate, which represents a 0% millage rate increase for next year's budget. We are happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? I'm not seeing any. I'll close this public hearing and request a motion.
There was no public comment as well.
Right, no public comment. None here.
I move to approve Resolution number 2022-R-52 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Luke to approve Resolution number 2022-R-52 as presented, seconded by Vice Mayor Langdon. Anything to that, Commissioners?
Yes, sir. Just would like to state that this is no increase of the millage rate. We do not set the system of how it's done. It's done through the property tax appraiser. If somebody's property tax or property value rose, they will see an increase, but it's not because we're increasing it. Our millage rate is staying the same. Thank you.
Thank you. And that passes five to zero. Moving on to Resolution number 2022-R-53. City Clerk, read by title only, please.
Resolution number 2022-R-53. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Northport, Florida, adopting the final non-district budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2022, and ending September 30, 2023, adopting the final capital improvement budget and program, prescribing the terms, conditions, and provisions with respect to the items of appropriations and their payment, providing for supplemental appropriations and re-appropriations, providing for findings, providing for posting of the budgets, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. City Manager, this is your item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This CIP capital improvement program budget is the result of workshops that we held on June 14, 15, and 16. It comprises information that is necessary for us to continue to move forward with the direction of our capital improvements, and we are here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Not seeing any. Any public comment? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing and request a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move to approve Resolution number 2022-R-53 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor to approve Resolution number 2022-R-53 as presented. That was seconded by Commissioner Luke. Anything to that?
No, sir.
Please vote. And that passes four to one, with Commissioner McDowell dissenting. Commissioner McDowell, would you like to state why you're dissenting?
My reasons are very similar to the first reading, and I'll just reiterate for those that are listening. I, this budget did not earn my vote. The fact that we could not go through line by line.
How do you?
I see it. I said this budget did not earn my vote. The reasons are very similar to the first reading. I said we could not go through this budget line by line. We could not find compromise. This is basically a rubber stamp of the city manager's request. I'm not seeing a plan for the leaner years that are ahead in this budget. Adding 50-plus or minus employees for this fiscal year is going to require a full financial salary next year. And bottom line is, this budget, we could have done better. We could have reduced the millage rate. We could have cut things. We could have had a plan for those reasons. I could not approve this.
Thank you. Please. City Manager, your light is on.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make sure I point out that this line, this budget was done line item by line item. There was the opportunity to discuss each line item in either the workshop or individually during one-on-one sessions. All of those opportunities were available. What we did not do was discuss the budget in a line item detail during the public meeting, and the benefit of providing the access to all the information in other meetings was to go over the plan, which was to tie the budget request back to the strategic plans and priorities and pillars that we said were important to us as a city that is constantly growing, which represents the 47.5 employees that we asked for in this budget, so that we could keep up with the growth of this city, which is one of the fastest-growing cities in the country. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. City Clerk, do we have any more public comment online? All right, there's none in-house. It is 5:17. I adjourn this meeting. Okay. Good afternoon. Today is Thursday, September 22, 2022. It's 5:18 PM. We are in the city chambers, and I call the Fire Rescue District Meeting to order. Everybody, everybody is still present. We did have Chief Garrison show up mid-last meeting, so he is here. Everybody's here. We did the pledge, and I look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Langdon to approve the agenda as presented, seconded by Commissioner Luke. Please vote. Or Commissioner McDowell, sorry. Please vote. My mistake. And that passes five to zero. City Clerk, any online public comment? All right, I have none in-house. Resolution number 2022-R-54. City Clerk, can you read by title only?
Resolution number 2022-R-54. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Northport, Florida, as the governing body of the Northport Fire Rescue District, adopting the final Fire Rescue District budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2022, and ending September 30, 2023, prescribing the terms, conditions, and provisions with respect to the items of appropriation and their payment, providing for supplemental appropriations and re-appropriations, providing for findings, providing for posting of the budget, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. City Manager, this is your item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The proposed budget for the fiscal year for the Fire District for next year, 2022 to 2023, is $15.1 million. This is a decrease of $615,000, which represents a district assessment rate decrease of 14% over the prior year's rate. We ask that you adopt it, and we are here to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Commissioners, any questions?
I'll make a motion, Mayor.
Pardon?
I'll make a motion when you're ready.
Oh, okay. Any public comment down there, City Clerk? I'm going to close this public hearing and request a motion. Commissioner McDowell.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution number 2022-R-54, adopting the Fire Rescue District budget for fiscal year 2022-23.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor to approve Resolution number 2022-R-54. The Fire District's budget for years 22 to 23 by Commissioner McDowell. Do I have seconded by Commissioner Luke? Anything to that, Commissioners? If not, please vote. And that passes five to zero. City Clerk, any public comment? All right, it's 5:21. I adjourn this meeting. All righty. Good afternoon. Today is Thursday, September 22, 2022. It's 5:21. We're in the city chambers, and I call this Roden Drainage meeting, District Meeting to Order. Everybody is still present. We have done the pledge, and I request a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Langdon to approve the agenda as presented, seconded by Commissioner Luke. Please vote. You already did. Just waiting on me. That passes five to zero. City Clerk, you got any public comment? And there's none here. Resolution number 2022-R-55. City Clerk, can you read by title only, please?
Resolution number 2022-R-55. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Northport, Florida, as the governing body of the Northport Roden Drainage District, adopting the final Roden Drainage District budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2022, and ending September 30, 2023, prescribing the terms, conditions, and provisions with respect to the items of appropriation and their payment, providing for findings, providing for posting of budget, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. City Manager, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This Roden Drainage District budget for 2223 is preparing our staff to handle the items in this particular division and department. We did not recommend an increase for this year, but we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any Commissioner questions. City Clerk, any public comment? All right, I'm going to close this public hearing and request a motion.
To approve Resolution number 2022-R-55 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Luke to approve Resolution number 2022-R-55 as presented, seconded by Vice Mayor Langdon. Anything to that, Commissioners?
No, sir. No, sir.
Please vote. That passes five to zero. Any public comments sneaking down there? All right, and it is 5:23. I adjourn this meeting. All right. Good evening. Today is Thursday, September 22, 2022. It's 5:24 PM. We are in the city chambers, and I call the Solid Waste District Meeting to order. Everybody's still present. We have done the pledge. I request a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner McDowell to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Luke. Please vote. Commissioner Luke.
Oh, so sorry.
Gentle fingers.
I guess.
There we go. Just...
Soft touch.
Just slam it in there. Five to zero. That passes five to zero. City Clerk, any public comment?
There is none.
All right, Resolution number 2022-R-56. City Clerk, can you read this item by title only, please?
Resolution number 2022-R-56. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Northport, Florida, as the governing body of the Northport Solid Waste District, adopting the final Solid Waste District budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2022, and ending September 30, 2023, prescribing the terms, conditions, and provisions with respect to the items of appropriation and their payment, providing for supplemental appropriations and re-appropriations, providing for findings, providing for posting of the budget, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, ma'am. City Manager, this is your item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This proposed budget for solid waste for fiscal year 2223 is approximately $11.5 million, and it represents a decrease of nearly $1.2 million from the amended budget. And the assessment rate for the fiscal year upcoming will be $250 per resident, which is no increase from the prior year. We're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the Commissioners? I'm not seeing any. City Clerk, any public comment? All right, I'm going to close this public hearing and request a motion.
Make a motion, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution number 2022-R-56, adopting the fiscal year 2223 solid waste final budget.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner McDowell to approve Resolution number 2022-R-56, years 2022, 23, solid waste fiscal final budget, made by Commissioner McDowell, seconded by Commissioner Luke. Anything to that, commissioners?
No, sir.
Please vote. That passes five to zero. City Clerk, any final public comment of the evening?
I have a final comment.
You have a final comment, not a public comment. Go ahead, Commissioner Luke.
It was stated in a couple meetings ago, brought up something about, in public comment, about our wages. Our wages are not calculated by the amount of money that comes in. It is calculated by the population of the city. So I didn't want somebody thinking that we were making money off of anything. It goes by the population. Thank you.
All right. It's 5:27. I adjourn this meeting. Have a great evening, everyone. We are done.